Another shooting?
No.
Seriously, it hurt?
Uh-uh.
Up in St. Joe. It'd be national news. Um, he said you're in Michigan. So guy was uh, he took off, um, two bells to kill, three people to kill.
You heard Steve Lasky on the new chaplain. Chaplain Williams.
Yeah, I heard.
Can you also have a special word for St. Joe today?
Yeah.
Yes. So this, let's talk to him.
Who is it?
We call Alex. And they're anywhere she talks, but this thing.
This one, we don't need this thing.
No. Oliver Davis. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I got my anger. Right on, right on. I had to pay, I had to fight. I didn't know what happened. Get in there. Okay. But I got it. I'm ready for it. There's nothing like it, man. Especially, especially, you know, having risks, you know, it's normal for us to think there's not going to be people going to be just taking very many shots. You have, you have an incident going on, all of a sudden, you're fired. You.
I mean, today, it's right in the place, I mean.
Yeah.
How many times I've been up there with them, some women made in, you know?
I heard there was Iowa or someplace, they, a couple of police officers. Why? You know, it's, it's insane. You have to, we have to relearn. And really, respect is to be given, not earned. You are meant to be given.
Whatever.
Respect all other people. You respect your parents. You respect your family.
Yeah, go ahead. Stick his head out and. I know money, yeah. So, he had, he got right to say, uh, well, you can, like, you two walk over to that microphone, because he was about to call you.
Yeah, really.
So, I got, so like Vietnamese does, you know, you, 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 you.
You show me that one?
So I got like a variation. I got exactly, I got two dollars. I got.
Over here by Randy. I have to take Randy, yeah?
And then, which are, like, rock. I'm sitting there grabbing outside.
Real keys are like, come on.
Same place. I don't think they're going to be in, on the other side tonight.
Carry no weight.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'll restart. Joe, you ready?
Oh, yeah.
The Monday, July 11th, common council meeting is now in session. Our chaplain today will be Steve Lasky, who will give our invocation. Sir?
Let us pray. Dear heavenly father, we thank you for your many blessings that you pour upon us on a daily basis. In times of tragedy now hitting too close to home in, in St. Joseph County, we pray your comfort and your peace, your support for those who are presently grieving. We pray your protection on all people, on, on police officers, on all government officials, and on all the citizens. We pray that you would help us to bring peace, to love and respect one another, to learn how to conduct ourselves, how to do that which is right. We ask you to be with the council here this evening. Bless their meeting, their deliberations, and, and all that they do. May we be guided by your power from above. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Just, I would like to take another moment of silence for this past week and also the tragedy at Bari and Springs Courthouse today. That was your question.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Fowler, the role please.
Councilmember Preston, here. Councilmember Broden, here. Dr. Bronner. Vice President Davis.
Present.
Mr. Boardy.
Present.
Mr. Furlan.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
President Tim Scott.
Present.
And Randy Kelly is excused. Case present.
Thank you. Before I commence.
To the subcommittee, to the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, the subcommittee on minutes has inspected the minutes of the June 27th, 2016, meeting of the common council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Mayor is represented by James Mueller, and there is no report from offices. Oh, the mayor is here, too. The mayor is present and representing the mayor. Thank you. This time we'll turn to special business. Clerk Fowler, can you read 1656 first?
1656, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, proudly and publicly honoring and commending, I do not want to butcher this name, Sun Yeh, for his exemplary and exceptional musical talents and leadership for 28 seasons as the musical director of the South Bend Symphony.
Thank you, folks. We have the resolution this evening, which is being brought by the council to honor Sun Yeh, maestro of the South Bend Symphony Orchestra and Philharmonic also, or is it? Whatever it is, okay.
South Bend.
All right, thank you. Let me read this, which is quite an interesting history for this gentleman. Whereas, South Bend Common Council notes that 28 years ago, one of the five finalists was selected to take a podium to lead the South Bend Symphony Orchestra, with a most talented maestro having been chosen, who has truly captured the hearts, minds, and soul of South Bend, Maestro Sun Yeh. And whereas, Sun Yeh was born in Shanghai, China, on May 17th, 1950, to his mother, who was a vocal professor at Shanghai Conservatory of Music, and to his father, who became a professor at the Shanghai Institute of Foreign Trade, who together had foresight and a vision to send young Sun for piano lessons beginning at age five. And whereas, despite experiencing many challenges during the Cultural Revolution, which especially affected his parents, Sun practiced behind, in secret, behind thick, soundproof curtains of his teacher's home. He graduated from Shanghai Conservatory of Music in 1972, and was sent to sometimes difficult locations during this period of time, later becoming a pianist in 1977, touring Thailand and Singapore, and returning in 1979 to the Shanghai Conservatory of Music to study conducting. In 1983, he was a man's college of music in New York City, first foreign-born valedictorian, thereby earning a scholarship to Yale University's postgraduate music program. And whereas, Maestro Sun Yeh catapulted into his brilliant and extraordinary career as an orchestra conductor, with some of his many outstanding accomplishments, including his passion to develop the musical talents of youth, conducting the St. Louis Symphony Orchestra, Tampa's Florida Orchestra, Albany, New York Symphony Orchestra, Chicago Symphony Orchestra, the San Francisco Symphony Orchestra, Northwest Indiana Symphony Orchestra, and became the number one conductor, the first conductor to ever hold music directorships in both the Western Symphony Orchestra and the Chinese Instrument Orchestra by leading the South Bend Symphony and Singapore Chinese Orchestra. And whereas, Maestro Sun Yeh has regularly conducted workshops throughout Europe and Asia, and has been in constant demand as a guest conductor of orchestration in France, Poland, Russia, the Czech Republic, China, Hong Kong, and Taiwan, while developing a stellar and exemplary reputation throughout the United States, where he focuses his energies on building platforms to nourish the young people's hearts and talents for generations to come. Now therefore be resolved by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. The South Bend Common Council proudly recognizes Maestro Sun Yeh on brilliantly building the South Bend Symphony Orchestra in one of the finest regional orchestras in the United States, and for leading it to win under his baton the ASDAD Award for Excellence in Programming and Performing. Section two, the common council publicly wishes Maestro Sun Yeh, his wife, Salan, and their children, Mona, Alina, and Joseph, all the very best in future years. You have truly enriched our community. Bravo, and thank you so much.
Well, myself and my family is very overwhelmed, actually, in last two, one or two months, by the enthusiasm from people in this area. And, uh, thank you so much to the city council for such a wonderful resolution, and thank you so much, Dr. Bronner, for your recommendation. And I'm so happy to stand here to receive this honor and, uh, during this moment, I still remember 28 years ago when I first came, and it was a, a quite bitterly cold winter, but, but the people were very warm. And people very warm. And, uh, that time, you know, as I told other people, I was one of the other conductors to try to say, hey, maybe I would try a job for three years, or maybe six years. My mentor, Leonard Slaken, current music director of Detroit, actually, he set a term 10 years the most. I said, why, Leonard, we have to be leaving jobs 10 years? He said, because people will be tired of you. So, but, but we fall in love with South Bend, and, uh, myself and Salan and the children, actually, we purposely put our three children through the South Bend Public School, and grow up very nicely, two graduate from Northwestern University, one just got into George Washington U. in DC. And, uh, and also, as the music director of South Bend Symphony, we enjoyed the great support and enthusiasm from people here. And so, we not only exceed three years, six years, up to 10 years, we decided to still stay. And time goes by fast, it's already 28 years. Finally, I look back that we felt our 28 years here is absolutely worth, and thank you so much for your support. And I particular your support to the South Bend Symphony, helped me and together with the staff and musicians build this orchestra into one of the finest regional orchestras in the world, and I can probably say that, probably you can tell me too. And nowadays, people actually don't, do not have to go to Chicago, New York. They can hear very fine Beethoven, Tchaikovsky, here in South Bend. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, would you like to address the public response?
Sure. Um, at first, I'll start with, anybody from the public wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Samuel Brown, I live at 222 East Navarre Street, and I represent a rock group called Citizen United. I was very impressed with that just came from the school board, maybe in our new superintendent, who just came on board. And from listening to this gentleman here, it's a remarkable story, that he put three fine kids going to high universities from the South Bend Public Schools. So we have a lot of hope and prayers for our school kids coming, and bring our kids back in instead of running away. Thanks for that, and wanted to thank you for our South Bend session.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
David, Mayor Pete Buttigieg, with offices on the 14th floor of this building, and just wanted to add to the praise and appreciation for Maestro. You often hear me speak about our city punching above its weight class, and one of the finest examples of how that is true is the South Bend Symphony Orchestra under Maestro's leadership. You know, we, uh, there are very few cities our size that boast a symphony orchestra with such professionalism and talent, and that's a credit to his leadership. I feel qualified to speak about Maestro on three counts. One is as one of the young people who was bussed in to learn a thing or two about music in grade school, when Maestro, who somehow hasn't aged with youth concerts, and helped introduce us to the joy and the magic of music many years ago. Secondly, of course, is mayor of a city that is made better by his extraordinary talent and contributions. And third, as a musician who has performed a couple of times under his direction, which admits some of the highlights, not obviously my musical career, but also my time in office. And I must say that he has, as many great leaders do, a remarkable capacity for, on one hand, warmly engaging and putting you at ease, and on the other hand, inspiring you to do very, very well, and not to disappoint him in any regard. And I know these, these attributes have helped him really raise the bar. So it will be a hard act to follow, but I know the symphony orchestra is looking forward to the coming concerts with the different finalists for the position. But really, this community has been made so much better, Maestro, by, by your efforts and the family, Sue who's with us this evening, Joe, and your siblings, and you will always have a very warm place in all of our hearts, and we thank you for everything that you've done to make this community better place.
Thank you. At this time, we'll turn to council for comments before any motion.
I just want to say that I think when I saw you in the audience tonight, I felt like a little groupie. I was like, oh my gosh, I've seen you so many times on TV. I'm like, oh yeah, I know that guy. And I just want to thank you, as someone who has zero musical talent whatsoever, but certainly an appreciation for all of the work that you've done and I've seen over the years, having worked with the schools and know all the work that you've done in pouring your talent and gifts into the young people in our community. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for gracing our community with your many talents and enthusiasm, and also bringing out the very best in the musicians who have been with you over these 28 years. Thank you for, for that gift to our community. Most grateful, as Regina had said, for the particular space in your heart that you have embraced our youth in our community, and how important that is for our future generation and just the quality of life here in South Bend. So, so thank you for making such a big space in your heart and actually, you know, putting that out there and implementing it. And thanks, too, for the shout out for the South Bend Community Schools that was not missed here by me as a council member who has children in our schools, and as often, as frequent and as loud as we can amplify what a good job they do. And I thank you for purposely shouting out to them tonight. So thank you, best wishes to you and to your family, and gratitude to you as a family. Obviously, anytime anyone is involved in a not-for-profit endeavor or public service, I mean, this, this is service, it's, it's, it really is family that comes along. So thank you for, for all of your support and effort over the years as well.
Vice President Diggs.
Um, Maestro, William Edley Shannon wrote a poem, I like poems, it's called "My Symphony", "To Live Content with Small Means, To Seek Elegance Rather Than Luxury, And Refinement Rather Than Fashion, To Be Worthy Not To Be Respectable, And Wealthy Not Rich, To Study Hard, Think Quietly, Talk Gently, Act Frankly, To Listen to Stars, Birds, Babies, And Sages With Open Hearts. You All Bravely Await Opatience, Hurry Never, And A Word To Let The Spiritual Unbidden, Unconscious Grow Up Through The Common. This Is To Be My Symphony." And you have let the common become great through you. And the first line I like, it says, "To Live Content with Small Means." You've taken a small city, and you've made it great. You've taken a small orchestra, and you, just like you said, you don't have to go to Chicago and all those other places, you've made it great. And so, just like the poet William Edley Shannon said, you have brought contentment here, elegance, and refinement to our city. So I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boardy? Uh, thank you. Your contributions are very, very much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much. We've been fortunate enough to have an outstanding symphony in South Bend ever since I've been alive, and I know I preceded certainly my birth, but.
Really? We've had, we've had a really world-class symphony all my life here, and it's, it's because of you, so thank you for that.
Gavin, I would like to follow that. I would like to thank you for sharing your gift and your passion with our community, but especially with our youth. We'd like to thank your family for sharing you with our city. Because of you, music is at a different level, and because of you, as we look at where we stand as a city, and as you stated earlier, we don't have to go to Chicago or New York. We have greatness right here, and we really appreciate all your efforts, and we wish you the very best.
And sir, I, I can repeat everything that this council has said. Thank you so much. You preceded me by a few years from, from St. Louis. I originally lived in St. Louis, I remember those days there, and thank you for your time there. Maestros Lakin had, you all, that staff, had just great energy and brought it there. You brought it here, and I appreciate it. What this world needs more is more beautiful music, more creativity, and it is definitely needed within our school systems and within each of us. So thank you so much, Dr. Bronner. So, Dr. Bronner, any, anything?
Uh, I was gonna read Oliver's poem, but.
Oh, great, great.
No, I, I think that oftentimes, what is overlooked are the things that occur on the lower level and the subliminal levels around here, and too often, the things that make the paper are the things that cause us to be frustrated and disappointed, so I'm very, I, I, actually Gavin, since I'm older than you, I remember when Sun Yeh came down. To imagine someone remained here for, for 28 years and fostered the development that he did, is something I think the city can be proud of, and we certainly know that the maestro is proud of it. I would like to ask the council adopt this by acclamation.
Someone, second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Come on. Ryan's coming up.
Oh, yeah. Once you and your family can come up here, everyone would like to thank you.
It's a tradition. Like none of it.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Thank you so much. And Nigel wants to.
Yes.
Come down, down. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You've been here about six years. Thank you. Congratulations.
Hi, thank you so much. Yeah, we do. Hi, glad to meet you. Nice to meet you. Congratulations to you.
You should take a picture with them, real quick. Yeah, Justin. Can you, want to take a picture, take a picture with them? Was that your camera? You might got a camera. Thank you. Come on, got it? Karen, you got it?
Karen, I have to picture you. My mommy's always talking to me, she keeps that moment in mind.
Okay, thank you. Um, I did jump a bit on a little bit.
Are you, are you?
Yeah. Yeah, we're fine. She said she took it, right? Yeah, we got it, we're good. You took it. So I jumped ahead. Um, the mayor was here, and the city is represented by James Mueller, and there are no reports from city offices at this time. I would entertain a motion to resolve with me committee of the whole. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
For convenience, Gavin will stay in his place.
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the full council meets as a committee. During each bill, there will be an opportunity for the public to comment either in favor or in opposition. If you choose to comment, you have five minutes to comment either again in favor or in opposition on any bill. With that, would the city clerk please read 3216?
I would like to make a motion to hear bills 3216, 3316, and 3416 for purpose of public hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Would the city clerk please read 3216, 3316, and 3416?
3216, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in 2016, of $385,775 from EMS Capital Fund Number 284, $150,000 from Solid Waste Fund 610, and $60,601 from the 2011 Sewer Bond Fund Number 659. 3316, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year of 2016. 3416, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations in 2016, of $500 from DCI Fund 212, $850,000 from the LOIT 2016 Special Distribution Fund Number 257, and $114,762 from Parks Non-Reverberant Capital Fund Number 405, $114,662 from Parks Fund 201, and $63,555 from Major Moves Fund Number 412.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Committee report.
Oh, I'm sorry. Committee report, please.
I would like to report that personnel and finance committee held a committee meeting and public hearings on these three bills, and we send these bills to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Representative, please.
John Murphy, city controller, with offices on the 4th floor. These are the second quarter appropriations and budget transfers. We had a good discussion at the committee meeting. Just briefly recap, the first are the additional appropriations for the enterprise fund. The first involves $150,000 in solid waste fund for trash and yard waste covers. We have sufficient cash to cover that. The second is $60,601 to close out the 2011 sewer bond fund. And then $385,775 is a payment to the state of Indiana, and in return will receive $1,153,017. It's a Medicaid reimbursement type arrangement where we pay the state their portion, and we receive the balance of the funds. Those are the enterprise fund appropriations. Bill 3316 are the budget transfers. Those are just transfers between different accounts, not additional appropriations, which is between different types of accounts, maybe personnel, supplies, or supplies to capital. So I won't go through all of those, but we talked about those in the committee meeting. The third is Bill 3416, that's the civil city fund's additional appropriations, and those are briefly, there's a small appropriation of $500 for petty cash fund in the community investment fund. There's $850,000 of, with the, the general assembly passed a special LOIT distribution, and we received our, our money about a month ago, so we were required to set up a separate fund, and we've done that. And so this is the addition, initial appropriation from that fund. And then I think Eric Corvath talked about that there'd be more discussion for the 2017 budget on, on uses for that fund, and we'd want the council to certainly weigh in on that. The next two go together, $114,762, we collect certain fees in the Parks Operating Fund 201. which is between different types of accounts, maybe personnel, supplies, or supplies to capital. So, I won't go through all of those, but, uh, we talked about those in the committee meeting. The third is Bill 34-16. That's the civil city funds additional appropriations, and those are briefly, there's a small appropriation of $500 for petty cash fund in the community investment fund. There's $850,000, uh, this, with the, the general assembly passed a special LOIT distribution, and we received our, our money about a month ago. So, we were required to set up a separate fund, and we've done that. And so, this is the addition, uh, initial appropriation from that fund. And then I think Eric Horvath talked about that there'd be more discussion for the 2017 budget on, on uses for that fund, and we'd want the council to certainly weigh in on that. The next two go together, $114,762. We collect certain fees in the Parks operating fund 201, which are transferred over to the capital fund. We didn't make that transfer last year, so this is actually taking care of that transfer. And then the, the Parks capital, they would, the Parks department would like to appropriate, spend some of that money. So, those two go together for $114,752. Then the last one is a payment out of major moves, which really should've been paid out of the Smart Streets Fund, so it's just a reimbursement of major moves. So, um, that covers that, that last item. Would you happen to answer any questions that you have on these, uh, items?
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from council? We'll go down the line. Uh, any questions?
Um, I'd prefer, I think Oliver might have the same question that I have.
Okay. And then we can, we can come back. Oliver?
Um, again, can we just clarify? Uh, you've mentioned Eric Horvath's comments. Um, wanted to clarify that. Could you clarify what you have, our understanding of it, um, since this is more of a questioning period with that?
Well, I understood his comments to mean that, that this fund is subject to appropriation by the common council, so as far as, as far as the 2017 budget process, we have a, a good discussion of what, what these funds should be used for. It'd be like, well, like we do any other fund as far as budget process.
And just for the sake of those who are in the audience, we had talked about the $850, what's that, $850,000?
Right.
That came from the state, um, that, that was not normally, that comes to the state. Could you just clarify that for them to understand where that money comes from?
Where the money came from?
Yes.
Sure. The, uh, state, uh, there were, uh, built-up funds in the, the state holds, uh, local income tax money, and then they distribute it to the county, and then the county distributes it to us. So, they had surplus funds that they were holding for all the municipalities in this, in the state. So, they made a determination that they wanted to distribute some of that LOIT money out into the, into the municipalities. So, they did an allocation and determined for each local unit what type of distribution they would receive. And our, our distribution was a little over $4.2 million. And Mission Walker got some, and, you know, the different local units all, each received a distribution. And so, that's where the money came from. It was actually money that, you know, was ours all along, but it was just held in the trust accounts at the state, so they distributed that money. They earmarked that 75% of it needed to go to road, for road projects, and they also earmarked that it had to go into a certain fund with a fund number of 257, which we've, we've set up that fund. Um, so that's basically how it was, that's how it was just...
And then, and I just got you from that money, from the, hopefully by, we talked about in September, by September, we should be able to bring back and possibly use some of that monies, not only for rainy day funds, but also for the, back in our neighborhoods to help fix up our streets, and we'll come back to you with some requests on that.
Right. I think he's, he indicated that it's, uh, any kind, any street-type project would be eligible for spending out of fund.
I appreciate your comment.
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none?
Actually, let me finish, or, uh, follow up on that. So, there'll be a fund, or, within this account, um, 257, um, there'll be about $3.3 million that, it's going, it's in that account now. This expenditure is 2016.
Right.
Between now and the end of the calendar year, correct?
Right. Yeah, yeah. Right. The amount is, that was deposited, and that fund was $4.2 million.
Right.
So, if you assume all of the $850 is spent by the Indiana, there'll be about $3, $3.4 million.
And, um, with regard, and, and maybe just refresh my memory on it, if you're aware of anyone else in the audience, but the $450,000 allocation for Corbin Ironwood, is that for engineering or, at this point, or does anybody know like that?
I, I don't know the specifics on that.
Okay.
I apologize. But, I think he's leveraging some, I think he's leveraging some federal, it's some local badge money, so he's kinda leveraging...
Right. I knew that.
State money on that. So, that's a good, that's a good idea. That's, one of the design purposes of this fund is to, to do exactly what he's doing.
And is there any stipulation with regard to this fund in terms of, um, years that it needs to be dispersed within? So, obviously 2016, we've got something on the pipeline.
No, there's not a time you have to spend it, but you do have to spend it for road-type projects.
Okay. And then the safe route to school, I know that's a federal match program, um, uh, primarily sidewalks, but I'm assuming that there's also, um, crosswalks and lighting and things that...
I, I'm not, I'm not enough to know that, I'm sorry.
That's an area thing.
I know there's something with that regarding streets, 'cause we're, what currently is happening over at Harrison School.
Right.
And, um, one of the, is that called public, so they are fixing up all that.
Well, it's been, yeah.
Yeah, so, I know.
Progressively a different district, but...
That's correct. So, I, you, you are correct with that.
Seeing no other questions, we'll open up to the public. Uh, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Now, back to the council, with your pleasure.
Motion to approve.
And I think...
Motion to, yes.
Can I entertain a motion to approve 32-16?
So moved. Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. To recommend favorably.
Second. So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, entertain a motion to recommend favorably 33-16?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, entertain a motion to recommend 34-16 favorably.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, with that, the committee, oh, could I entertain a motion to resolve with the committee?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Good. Thank you. As I said, the council is off.
Full council is now back in se- session. Clerk Fowler, would you please read 32-16?
Third reading. 32-16. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations for 2016 of $385,775 from EMS capital fund number 287, $150,000 from solid waste fund 610, and $60,601 from the 2011 sewer bond fund 659.
Move for the passage of Bill 32-10.
Second.
16.
Second.
Ms. Fowler?
Madam Roehlka?
Please.
Councilmember Broden? Aye. Dr. Warner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Boardy?
Aye.
Mr. Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Tim Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. 33-16, please.
33-16. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for year 2016.
Move for the passage of Bill 33-16.
Second. Ms. Fowler?
Dr. Warner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Boardy?
Aye.
Mr. Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Milton?
Aye.
President Tim Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. 34-16.
34-16. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in 2016 of $500,000, $500,000 from DCI fund 212, $850,000 from LOIT 2016 special distribution fund number 257, $114,662 from Parks non-reverting capital fund number 405, and $114,762 from Parks fund 201, and $63,555 from major moves fund number 412.
Move for the passage of Bill 34-16.
Second.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Boardy?
Aye.
Mr. Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Dr. Warner?
Aye.
President Tim Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. There are no resolutions. We'll move to first readings. Clerk Fowler, would you please read 35-16?
35-16. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana annexing two and bringing within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana and amending the zoning ordinance for property located in center township contiguous therewith, Council Manic District number one, four, 22575 Block US 20 West, 22875 Block US 20 West, 22965 US 20 West, 24632 US 20 West, 24650 US 20 West, 24700 US 20 West, and 54270 Pine Road, South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to send the area plan?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 36-16, please.
36-16. First reading on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 202 Bartlett Street, Council Manic District number one, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to send the area plan and set for public hearing and go to the zoning annexation committee on August 22nd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 37-16, please.
37-16. First reading on an ordinance initiated by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana amending chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article 2, by adding single-family dwelling to permitted uses in MF1 urban corridor, multi-family district, MF2 high-density multi-family district, and MU mixed-use district.
Motion to send the area plan and zoning annexation for August 22nd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 38-16.
38-16. First reading on an ordinance initiated by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana amending chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article 3, by adding group residency to special exception uses in CBD central business district and section 11 by updating the definition of family and group residency.
Motion to send the area plan and zoning annexation for August 22nd. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Unfinished business.
Yes, Mr. Furlet.
Yes, sir.
Um, one, one quick note, um, before, if you, in your districts, if you have anything coming before area plan, could, if you are aware of it, could you please send me a heads up, um, so I can, um, brief them or get in touch, especially if it comes with issues of the city, so I'll know how to prepare myself ahead of time?
In the extension?
Yeah, until that works well. Um, but tomorrow, um, Dr. Warner, the 5:30 meeting?
Uh, yeah, the utilities committee, uh, we have a resolution block before us, uh, regarding, uh, the ultimate disposition or...
Clean air.
Continuation with regards to, uh...
Clean energy.
Some, yeah, clean air community. So, uh, we are having a public hearing on that tomorrow night at 5:30 in this chamber. Um, it will be, it's open to anyone who wants to attend, and the, uh, there'll be copies of the resolution available at that time, uh, that was brought to us for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else under unfinished business? Nope. Turn to new business. Anything under new business?
Not necessarily new, but I, I do want to commend, uh, Chief Wacowski. I wanted to commend him and his, um, all police officers, um, and the, all the different, um, news outlets and, um, the different ways they've handled our community, particularly Saturday night. And, um, I want to thank you for all of your hard work, and, um, we want to continue to keep all of our city and all of your officers and you in our prayers, especially with everything going on. And, um, um, I encourage again, if, I mean, as a therapist and a counselor, um, people, if they need to go to council, whatever, because people are scared right now. And I've talked to different officers, and they're scared, and, and you can't hardly sleep when you see what's going on. And, um, so, I just want to let you know, I want to thank you, and, um, we, we just keep this community in our prayers as we look for peace.
And I want to add to Vice President Davis's comments. I also want to commend the citizens of South Bend for their upstanding behavior this weekend, uh, and, um, not being in the national news and doing a wonderful job of having respectful discourse. And, uh, out of all this tragedy, I hope we can build upon what happened this weekend within South Bend and moving forward. Any other new business? Nope. Seeing none, we'll turn to the privilege of the floor. This is the time where you, the citizens, can come and speak to the council. You will speak to us. Uh, we will not provide any comments or answers back. You have three minutes. Um, uh, Councilman Davis will time you. He'll give you about a 30-second...
Gavin, Gavin got his stuff already working.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Councilman Furley, uh, will time you, and, uh, he'll give you about a 30-second warning. You can speak about anything except what was on the agenda tonight. So, with that, please give your name and address and go.
My name is Sammy Brown.
I live at 222 Navarre Street, the City of South Bend. I represent Washington Group of Citizens Behind. I got a lot of, a couple of things I'd like to give out. I'm a, I really remember the group called the Naptime Riders. They've been around a long time, and one of my best friends ran in that group, and I tried to get them to see the light of doing things the proper way. So I was able to represent them through the city government by working and following the laws of the citizens out there, because they've been around a long time, and they had a tough history of doing things improper. But first of all, let's start with this. Want to commend Ms. Preston. I called her out, because I worked real hard to get this on the agenda, so I proved that the board of works. The last day before this event, getting ready to happen, I called Ms. Preston, and I had her to call Mr. Horvath, who'd just been on the agenda. She texted me at 8:30 in the morning, and I was telling her, "Miss, it's Mr. Brown. Mr. Horvath said he was going to get you on the agenda."
Good work, good work.
I really appreciate that. I mean, for lack, because I worked hard on this committee, and I felt I deserved that. I went before the Board of Public Works, and I had to plead and just about pray that we got the resolution of blocking off a north side street to help divert traffic. So to preach upon it, under the leadership of Mr. Wacowski, I want to commend them for their outstanding work. They came up and they managed the event. My ex-officer was entertaining probably, saying, "No, we just made them stop." And they were very kind, very polite, and I was really proud of them, because we had a lot of people from out of town, from Latin, as far away as Nashville, come up to South Bend. Mr. Wacowski didn't know about this event, because he was there with them before, when we was on the, Huey Street, where Alfred Vasquez. But what I'm saying is, the community as a whole can come together if we all work together. And if we want our offices safe, they conducted itself in a fine manner, we conducted ourselves in a fine manner.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
And the last thing that was said before I left that meeting, they said, "We know you, we don't know them. Can you control them?" But I had no faith to put my neck out in the line for them, and they conducted themselves very well. And I'm proud of South Bend, and I'm proud of the city people that helped me get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, name and address, please.
Jesse Davis, P.O. Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. I come tonight, I'm just kind of curious, again, I asked about the nuisance ordinance and the list. It appears we have a lot of problems at Brothers Bar up in Eddie Street Commons. I had a son and some of his friends that were having a celebration up there over the weekend, and apparently there was two pretty serious incidents. One involved Michael Floyd, who was a Notre Dame football player, plays in the NFL now, apparently had an altercation with the South Bend police who were there at Brothers Bar. Not sure if they were there in a capacity as a police officer on the clock or moonlighting as security for the bar. But Michael Floyd tweeted a lot of pretty severe allegations about the officers being kind of racist, so on and so forth. I also got the view, I wish I could have brought it, but it was on Snapchat, so it disappeared, I'm trying to get a hold of it, a video, apparently the same officers had an altercation with a white gentleman there, somehow in the process, got taken to the ground, head busted open pretty severely, nice puddle of blood on the sidewalk, things of that nature. The people who were there said they did not see anyone get arrested. So I guess I'm coming to you, number one, because I brought Frank's place into light the last meeting. So now I'm saying we need to look into how many times the officers are called out there to Brothers. You know, are these places on the nuisance list? That was made such a big deal about the nuisance list. What's being done about all these incidents? This isn't the first time that I've had people call about Brothers Bar. So I'm just kind of curious what's going on there. I'm also kind of curious on the police officers being there. They're there all night, they're in squad cars, they're in full uniform. If they're not on the clock representing the South Bend Police Department, are we on the hook if they injure someone, or if they get injured? You know, I understand if an officer is out and he's not on the clock and he sees something happen, he should respond as a police officer, they say they're on duty 24 hours a day. But if you're working at a bar or getting paid for a bar, you are not representing the South Bend Police Department at that point in time, or you should not be. So I know that's been a big subject for a long time.
30 seconds.
We need to look into that and figure out what's going on there.
Okay, thank you. Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Brown. I live at 230 St. East Street. I come tonight with one of my children and told the other two are at a camp, but I wanted to get here before you all, before we become to the point where I'm showing a picture of my child in tears and mourning. So here goes. Good evening, my name is Jasmine Brown. I'm a proud homegrown citizen of the City of South Bend. I lived in multiple neighborhoods, but now lay claim to the west side. I care about this city. My past has been, my present is, and my future will be in this city. I've been a part of a great unifying moment and witnessed fragmentation via divisiveness on social, economic, and political issues. I'm here speaking tonight in light of recent national events, Dallas, Minnesota, Louisiana, and asking our city leaders to do everything in their power to prevent our city from getting to this point. Although our police community interactions have improved over the past decade, there were times when relationships were turned to ill-conceived ideas and actions. I have watched friends put face down in dirt by policemen's gun at point-blank range on their heads in suspicion of drug activity, often including their guilt of congregating while black. I have noticed a non-police presence on drug and gambling houses that cause a bribe on our neighborhoods and our taxpayer dollars, and then overreact when it's too late. My house was broken in two, three times. When the police showed, I felt more criminal than victim. I'm still awaiting findings and further assistance, and that was three police chiefs ago. I watched the death of Michael Anderson fragment relationships with the citizens and police. The infamyments tapes with Chief Boykins caused another crack in the racial divide between our residents and our city leaders. There are thousands of more stories, some different, some alike, but the main interwoven themes, they are unresolved. Things happen, and then they are swept under the rug as if they never existed. The non-resolution is sitting on the brim of the belly of this city, a beast awaiting to be unleashed. We've been blessed with some of the, we've been blessed that some of the tensions, the tensuous times did not cut deep enough to discourage South Bend, but wounds still remain and continue to fester, though same festering wounds have been cut open too many times without relief and remedy in our larger cities. South Bend could be one cut away. One of our former city leaders said last week, "It is too, it's too soon to act. Nothing could be further from the truth." We need proactivity. See, it isn't the bike lanes, smart streets, smoking and chickens that compromise our city relations, but the lack of engagement, lack of resolution, and the lack of smart neighborhoods. I come with solutions, and hopefully we can hold each other accountable. Here's what I'm willing to do. For our youth, I will continue to be Coach Brown and Ms. Brown in the classroom. I'll become more involved in our city government. I'll follow what Chief Wacowski asks of our citizens, when you see a policeman, speak and say hello.
You have 30 seconds.
I will continue to uplift my community and advocate. Now, I ask for our city leaders to come out behind their podiums and step into the street. I ask for the police not to be spoken to, but to speak out. I ask for our African-American leaders to extend their influence and facilitate our younger African-American leaders into city government. I ask that we cease the dichotomy of race and the dichotomy of rich and poor. In closing, I no longer look into just the legacy of equality, I'm looking forward to goggles of resolution engagement in safe neighborhoods. I don't just want equality, I want equity, through equity is how we begin the legacy of change and the strength to be that change. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, name and address, please.
Good evening, Ruth Warren, 1520 Sunnyme. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here tonight to talk about the city's proposal to build Fire Station Number 9 in Potawatomi Park. I want to emphasize that I respect South Bend firefighters and appreciate their service to this community. I have listened to Chief Cox's presentation to the Sunnyme Neighborhood Association, and afterwards, I stayed to ask him questions to better understand the proposal. However, I am still left with many questions. First, what is the decision-making process for this plan, and what governmental bodies will approve it? Number two, what about the deed? How will the city navigate the stipulation that the land be used for park purposes only? Number three, one news story reported that a bond would finance the station. How will the amount of the bond be determined, and when will it be issued? Number four, several citizens have proposed alternate sites, including New and Center. By what criteria is a site judge suitable or unsuitable? Has eminent domain been ruled out, and if so, why? Number five, supporters of the plan cite public safety as priority number one. What are the indicators and metrics of public safety, and how has a station at the park advanced that? Number six, the response time recommendation from the National Fire Protection Association